Because the family that owned it, I believe one owner before you, made a football field. Because every kid in the neighborhood was down on that lot every Sunday morning, playing football. So the whole thing was seated and wide open because he was a landscaper. So it really was a football field. So there's no trees left there, except around the perimeter. Any board members have any comments?
I don't have any.
Okay. Is there any comment from the audience? I knew you were going to jump up. Be reasonable now.
Oh, I am. Just Cormac on Antico Land Council, just for history purposes, this lot was included in the southern portions that got denied at town meeting two years ago, correct?
No.
Because I know that the northern half got approved and then the southern got denied. No lots got left out during that whole discussion, I don't think.
The southern portion Cormac was just the lots on the western side?
Yeah.
So there was a proposal?
So the lots on the eastern side weren't discussed at any point?
Were not in play.
Great, thank you. That's all. I think you'll know where I'll end up, but for now, that's fine. Thank you.
We've just got to stop picking on individual lots that were left out of something. Is any further discussion? Any further comments from the board or the audience? You want to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to close.
Barry made a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Now, seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we want to make a motion positive?
Send a positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay Cormac.
This is 42.
He's 49.
Forty-nine.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me move up. I can go relieve Grandma at a reasonable time. Appreciate it. Subsequent to our long discussion last time, I know that there was definitely a concern that there would be adequate process between the planning board and the applicant in terms of the discussion of the property, instead of having them getting everything completely lined up with having a notice, a letter of agreement with a prospective holder of a CR beforehand. So what I did was, it was basically, what I changed was still including a letter intent to hold the conservator's restriction from the prospective holder shall be, and then I slashed out what I originally had, and said required before definitive plan is approved. I probably should say endorsed rather than approved, but it's up to you for language. And then I think everything else was fairly straightforward. And then also, I would note that my esteemed colleague, Arthur Reed, wrote a resounding support in an email to Andrew today.
Well, wonders never cease.
Yep.
We need to let the record reflect that we have a board member who is still a member of your land council. Fred is still a member of your land council, I believe?
He is, yes.
Okay, just have to note that for the record.
No problem.
Andrew?
So, I think the change in number one works. I think that's great.
Okay.
That solves any of the problems. I think under two, and I didn't get back to you, I apologize for that, but...
I was late, Andrew.
That's okay. The general idea, I think, we totally support that as long as the board is in favor of that, is that you would back out the areas for the pool and the other things from the open space.
But can still be included, as we discussed. It's just got to have to have that maximum amount of true open space.
Right.
Yes.
So, we still need a couple tweaks on the language here, so I just want to, again, there's still some wording in here that doesn't match the zoning.
Okay.
So, but I think that if we continue this to the 20th, we can get that finalized and make that happen.
That's great, and I'd appreciate that. That'd be fine with me.
Are we definitely going to meet on the 20th? We were sort of trying not to meet on the 20th, but you think we need to, that's fine.
No, we need to. I think, again, the issue here is you could either back this out or put it on a separate lot. It doesn't matter, right?
Yeah.
And it's just, using the word prohibited in this particular, there's a little bit of confusion which, again, I just, it can be...
Andrew makes a good point. We all might be different in seven, 10, 12 years and not really know what the intent was, so let's get it right now.
That's right.
Yep.
I don't want to leave anything to chance. We just have to make sure that there's no misinterpretations?
Agreed.
Or any of that stuff.
Thank you.
Wasn't there a question about the CR during the process, as I recall?
No, the language that Cormac came up with addresses that.
Okay.
Because that is the critical point. Before the definitive plan is signed, if there is no holder of the CR, we've got a problem.
Yeah, that's true. I just want to make sure that that was what I recall.
Yeah.
That's a Tuesday.
Do you want to continue?
Hang on a second. The February 20th, Andrew, I have to be at HTC that night. What time of the day are we supposed to be doing February 20th? We don't usually meet on Tuesdays.
Five.
I have to be upstairs.
Yeah, and Tuesdays we don't normally meet. If we're going to meet extra meetings, we normally do it on a Thursday, not a Tuesday, and I cannot meet that night. I have a case upstairs.
You know, we have commitments to other people, including the board of selectmen, to get written recommendations and...
By when?
So, by that Wednesday, I believe, so.
What about Monday, the 19th? I know you've already sent out an email.
That's a holiday.
Oh, yeah. Crap.
That's why I moved to the Tuesday.
Okay. Well, we're running back and forth, up and down the stairs, getting my aerobic exercise. Okay.
Thank you.
So, this would be a continuation, then, Andrew? Anybody in the audience have any comments on this while you're here? Okay. Somebody make a motion to go to February 20th at 5:00? Is that it, Andrew, five?
Yes.
Down here, right?
Two fairgrounds.
Got to make sure everybody knows that.
That's even more difficult, because I have to be here.
People end up over here.
Okay. So it's at two fairgrounds. Cormac, over there. Okay, is that your motion now to continue it there?
Yes, yeah.
Is there a second? John's seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, we're back on schedule. You can go pick up your kid. I noticed you're not jumping up and running in.
Seven.
All righty, Article 36. Staff recommends a positive motion. This is the one along Orange Street, Williams and Union, going through RC...
Yep, thanks. Hang on.
Wrong, Matt.
It'll get there. There we go.
So, Madam Chair, this article would, you can see that there's a remainder of RC residential commercial. That's a commercial district that we're phasing out. These last properties are in that district now, and the proposal is to bring them to ROH, which is the same residential adjoining district to the, I guess, northwest. Generally, these properties are more residential in character, and in the ROH district, you can do ins, you are within the half-mile radius of the downtown, so there's some limited commercial that could still be done here.
Board members, any questions? No comments going on? Any comments in the audience? Okay, seeing none.
Close the public hearing.
Barry made a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion for a positive recommendation.
Barry's made a motion for a positive recommendation. Now, seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, this one, I didn't quite catch what was going on here. Article 37, because you want some taken out, some put in. Leslie?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are three parcels on Williams Lane that, where the owners have addressed concerns about moving from the current commercial zone to a residential zone. It was a 4, 6, and 8 Williams.
Which ones are 4, 6, and 8? The three right there in a row?
Yes.
Okay.
So those are potentially adjacent to the CN district, so, again, we can address those at the special town meeting. We'd like to move forward with the other article, other parcels that are identified. Again, this is moving from a commercial district to a residential district. Part of the property was purchased by the Boys and Girls Club for residential use, and the R5 designation is something that they support. Basically, there's not really a substantial change. It's the same lot size. It's actually 20% less ground cover, and in general, this is, these properties have a residential character as opposed to commercial.
One of these does not. One of these is all commercial. There's no residential in it at all. It's Matt McKeon's building.
That's the property being taken out.
Okay, because I wasn't quite sure which was 4, 6, and 8.
Because of the way the hand was moving.
Yeah, I assume that's 4 next to outdoor power, 6, and then Matt's is 8?
Correct.
Okay, so those three are coming out. They're doing a lot of work to number 6 right now. Okay. Anybody have any other concerns? Okay, anybody in the audience want to talk about this one? Okay. Somebody make a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then, someone making a motion to remove, removing those three lots?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead, go.
I'll make that motion.
Nat made that motion, is there a second? Barry seconded?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Sorry. I'll make a motion for a positive recommendation.
No, we just did that.
We just did that.
Oh, I thought we...
No.
It's always both of them, okay.
Yeah.
All right, now we have Article 38, and I had a question about this one also.
This was the input thing, right?
No.
So, Madam Chair, and Board members, this article looks at property between, it's on Pleasant Street between Bear and Williams.
There's the Boys Club.
Yep.
Property owned by NIR. There are two, it's currently zoned R1, residential one, even though there are, there are commercial uses on this property that are pre-existing, essentially nonconforming, that have occurred for some years. The article that was submitted looked at two different commercial designations, commercial Mid-Island or commercial neighborhood. So we've looked at the commercial Mid-Island and found that that's really too dense for this particular area. We're not recommending that. The CN district, which is essentially where the Boys and Girls Club is across the street, is more compatible. We've suggested that not all of it should be rezoned without some further discussion with the property owner. Generally, commercial activity along Williams has been a problem. Catherine, do you have the other map here?
No.
It was in the staff report.
What number are we on? 38?
Yeah. Let me see.
Okay, so, anyway, there's... Not that one. There it is, okay.
There we go.
So, and again, this is, we're open to having a discussion, but as you can see, the idea would be to leave properties along...
Cherry.
I'm sorry, Cherry, not Williams. Cherry Street in the residential zone, and also to buffer the one lot that's on Bear Street, to keep that in residential and focus the commercial, more in the part near the intersection of Bear and Pleasant, which is closer to other commercial uses. So, that's our general thought on this, but certainly willing to talk with the board further about it.
Matt?
Are you here for this?
Are you just hanging out back there, or do you want to talk?
Are you going to say something? I forgot what article we were on. Because this is a mess over here, you must have a plan. Certainly not keeping the greenhouses.
We are for now. I mean, we, you know, yeah. We don't, you know, we don't have a specific plan for it at the moment. I think that we'd probably support most of what Andrew just said, but I think we'd probably, you know, I'd need to run that up the flagpole. In other words, I think the biggest issue is, I look at the last plan that was just up there. I don't think we'd be opposed to a buffer to protect those houses on Bear Street, but that looks like a big one.
Yeah.
Big buffer.
Yeah.
Most of that, most of that back lot where you see it says leave in R1 is wet anyway.
All wet back there.
It's wet. So, but, I could also envision, you know, with some of the uses in CN, I could envision them wanting to have credit for the lot area in CN maybe. So, I don't think, you know, again, I'd have to check, but I don't think we have a problem with keeping Cherry and R1. We have pre-existing commercial rights on that street anyway.
Is this one that should go to February 20th to give you time to talk to?
I think so. I mean, I've talked to them generally about this kind of concept, but I actually hadn't seen this until tonight.
The tents are out of there now, so you've got that sort of old, commercial, garag-y thing.
Yeah, it's storage, and then the front of it is all employee housing, so...
They're going to get rid of that at some point, I was told. So, rather than continue this so they can work this out, do you want to move this to February 20th?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Is there anybody else in the audience who wants to speak? Okay. Somebody make a motion to go to February 20th at 5:00?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nat made a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Madam Chair, too, while the applicant is here, I mean, it would be good to hear or to get a plan which shows a more determinative location of the wetland, and also, an update on what the use is. I think you know that there's been some issues about what the actual use is. Is it in conformance with the ZBA permit from those years ago? And we'd like to really get a handle on that.
Yeah, yeah, I know, you're right. I mean, I, believe me. I've been preaching the choir here. I've been saying the same thing for many years now, so, yeah, I don't know how, I know there's a, there's got to be a wetland plan somewhere that delineates it. I know there is. So, I'll dig that out, and I'll maybe send that to you guys, so the board can see it. But it's a good chunk of that back part, for sure.
Right, and I think one issue, just, you know, to think about, is that even though that parcel in the back is big, it still counts for ground cover, and certainly under the ground cover, I mean, ground cover allowance in CN is 40% as opposed to the current 30%. So, I think, you know, we should think about maybe some limitations if we're using all that.
Plus, you have to deal, doesn't he have to deal with the upland issue? If there's a lot of wetlands there, there's got to be a percentage of upland.
There is.
Yeah.
And where the parking is, and all kinds of things, so, anyway. So, it would just be good to get a realistic view of what the actual plan may or may not be.
Yeah, they don't have one. I mean, I can't say it any clearer than that. I mean, you know, they had so much going on, I think that they, you know, this is, unfortunately, it's always been back burner, you know, but, and this will put it to the forefront, and it will probably make them have to make some decisions eventually here, so...
Or we can put this off till the special in the fall, so just keep that in mind.
Do that, too. Yeah.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Article 39, zoning map amendment to place properties at 10 Sun Island Road, currently in R5 into CN. This is a planning board, and staff recommends approval.
So, Madam Chair, this article comes out of discussions with the Airport Commission about creating housing on their campus, basically.
If we all have the same sound.
If you remember, when we talked to them, when the zoning was put in place, they were pursuing two different kinds of housing, so basically, one more rental housing type arrangement on CN, and a more housing ownership model on the R5. They're actually going to move towards an all rental program for that property, and it needs to be in one zoning district, so we're recommending that it all be consolidated under a CN. What they're proposing is actually individual houses, so it's not a large-scale building or anything that's radically different than what you see next door in the development immediately to the south, so...
Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Somebody want to make a motion?
To close the public hearing, absolutely.
Yes, second.
Okay, Nat seconded. Barry made the motion, Catherine, Nat seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Somebody make a motion to make a positive?
So moved.
Second.
Barry made the motion to recommend, make a positive recommendation, Nat seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article 40, zoning map amendment along Sconset. Out in Sconset, this is also a planning board. Staff recommends approval.
Madam Chair, so this continues some of the village rezoning work that's already been completed in Sconset. You can see the Village Neighborhood District already exists, covering the heart of the village with the Sconset Market and the various businesses there, and the casino. So this is a property that includes the Shawna Clear and Sconset Trust offices. So this is something that they have worked on and support. By changing it to the commercial zone, it preserves the existing commercial uses that exist, and it actually reduces the overall density, doubles the minimum lot size from 5,000 to 10,000, and reduces the overall ground cover, so...
Why'd they carve out?
Those are residences in the middle there that don't want, so again, we're trying to cover the existing extent of the existing commercial use.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Okay, any comments from the public? I'm not seeing any.
Close the public hearing.
Barry made a motion to close the public hearing, and Nat seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion for a positive recommendation.
Barry made a motion, and Nat seconded, to make a positive recommendation. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, Article 42, also a planning board.
Get moved to 220.
No, 49 did, and 52 did. 42 is here. This is Wire's Way, located in the R20. Oh, this is a lot that was left out. Andrew?
We all change back.
So, Madam Chair, this, when the immediate area was rezoned, you can see on the, on the map that basically, R1 was extended to the properties on the southern side of Westchester, the western side of New Lane, and this particular property was not included. The reason is, it's shown as a single property. It actually consists of two lots laid out prior to zoning in 1954 and 1968. So the property owners have asked that it be grouped with the other properties that were put into the district. This lot is nonconforming to the current R20 zoning district that it's located in now. If the existing house is removed, it does, it will possibly result in an additional lot.
She's going to move the house. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Okay. Andrew, be good on this one, seeing as that we have elements that don't want any subdivisions at all, is to put the explanation as to where the plan came from on the two lots as an adjunct to why we're making a positive recommendation on this one. And any, that goes for any of the other articles. We have 13 articles coming from us this year instead of 50.
Careful.
And anything that you think needs an explanation?
Sure, we can review comments at your meeting on the 20th.
Wasn't that all R1 at one time before?
It's been R1 for a while.
And then went back, and then back, and then it's all...
Well, the original zoning bylaw had four zoning districts.
Yeah.
It had R1, RC, ROH, and LUG.
That's it.
Okay.
Pretty sure this was...
So it was in R1 at one point. At some point, it moved to R20.
All the way to the end.
And the zoning districts that were drawn had a tendency to go down the middle of roads, so they didn't reflect both sides of the road.
Or through the property.
Which is something we've talked about before.
Or through the property. We've got plenty of those.
Found that out the other day, didn't even know.
Okay, so that's the story.
Okay.
We already closed the public hearing on this, right?
Did I?
Nope.
Don't worry about it.
Somebody make a motion to close the public hearing, if you haven't already done it? Did we already do it, Catherine?
Yes.
Okay.
We did.
No.
Yeah, motion to close the public hearing.
John seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion for a positive recommendation.
With notes wherever they need them.
Of course. Second.
Okay, Barry made a motion to make a positive recommendation, and Nat seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're now on to Article 44, which is also a planning board article. This is sort of a housekeeping article? Andrew, Leslie?
So, Madam Chair, what we have doing and are continuing to propose is that as conservation land is protected, that it be moved to the lowest intensity district. These particular properties are either owned by conservation organizations, or are held for open space purposes, or in some cases, might be affected by erosion or other factors. So the point is to move them into the lowest intensity district. So, we've done these fairly consistently to keep up with the acquisitions. These are all in the country overlay district they're moving to, from their current designation to either Lug III or Moreland Management.
Anybody have any comments about that one? Any comments in the public? Seeing none?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Barry made a motion to close the public hearing, Nat seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
And a positive recommendation on this one? Second.
Barry made a positive recommendation, Nat seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Article 45 is also a planning board. These are various technical corrections. If anybody has, wants to go through this, one painful phrase at a time. I've already done it, but save yourselves. Leslie?
Both 45 and 46 are the same. Yeah, 45. Okay, so 45, the amendment to the secondary dwelling definition. We've removed the definition of Bree's Way at the annual town meeting, so we should remove the reference to it being defined. And then in section 16C1, there is a reference to reducing the SR10 side yard setback, and, sorry, it's reducing it from 10 feet to 5 feet, and it's already 5 feet, so it doesn't need to be reduced. And so that's in conflict with the chart earlier in that chapter.
Anybody have any comments? Okay, anybody in the audience? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Barry made a motion to close the public hearing, Nat seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Positive recommendation on this one, second.
Okay, Barry and Nat again, positive recommendation. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're on forty-six again. There are miscellaneous technical corrections.
And Madam Chair, so, you know, it's worth having a quick discussion about these. Essentially, if you, if you look, in many cases, this is eliminating overly wordy explanations without changing what's actually occurring. So under remedies, again, nothing is really substantially changing here except it's simplified. Item two, the zoning enforcement officer, it's basically, talks about a stop work order, which again is exactly what is used in the bylaw. Again, third, we're talking about, the main change here is under three A, which is a time limit not to exceed five days. So there are times when actually the enforcement personnel allows longer because of a more complicated violation. So five days is not adhered to now. And basically, that's determined through the enforcement officer's assessment of what the violation is. The temporary permit section looks like it's being completely taken out, but it's actually being moved to another section. So there's nothing significant there. Again, item H talks about fees paid to a building inspector, which they're just paid again to the office. There is a reference, again, to seven days under occupancy permit, which is not realistic and not being done now. There's also a reference under the Historic District Commission that talks about a five working day time period. And again, zoning requirements for the building inspector or for HDC aren't really enforceable. They have their own set of rules and regulations. So while they might, if the HDC, for example, didn't issue this within five days, that's a zoning violation. It has nothing to do with their work. So it's, it's just not, it causes some confusion, as John, our HDC man, can attest to. So I think that's the main part. You can see at the end of this, the temporary permit is reinserted back in, in the proper location in the bylaw, so.
Just to give you a little background on the HDC involvement in the zoning bylaw. When it was put into effect in August of, July, August of seventy-two, it was about this thick and about that big. And in it, over time, until we did the rewrite, it had all HDC stuff in it. We had to enforce HDC stuff, we had to do the buildings according to HDC stuff. It was just, it was a crazy thing. This is sort of a holdover from back in those days. We've gotten rid of almost every piece of it up until now, because the HDC has its own act. But it was really difficult to get through the old zoning bylaws. I have a whole set of them.
Well, and just for clarity too, nothing in this changes the fact the HDC still has to conduct its review. And there's no occupancy or anything that's issued until they sign off on it. It's just the five-day period is often, A, not observed, B, not realistic, and it's not, certainly not enforceable under zoning.
All the primary and secondary language originally came from the HDC. It wasn't building or zoning. So a lot of it has just sort of morphed into zoning codes now. Okay, anybody have any comments about number forty-six?
No.
Anybody in the audience?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Barry's made a motion and Nat seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Positive recommendation on this one.
Okay, Nat seconded for a positive recommendation on Article forty-six. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Article forty-seven is also Planning Board. This again was something that was in, was out, was in, was out, and we put it in and it passed in November, but there was a part of it that was left out.
Well, Madam Chair.
Are not addressed, put it that way.
These articles that changed the underlying zoning, I believe, were sponsored by Citizen Petition.
Yep.
And they did not change the underlying overlay district, which is important to keep track of here. So you can see that basically the evergreen properties which were in the town district were changed to a country designation. They were changed to LUG-1. So those need to come out of the town district and be placed in the country overlay. The other property, which is on Werro Werro, was in the country overlay district. It was put into a town zoning district, so it is changing from country to town. So this doesn't change, the zoning has already been changed.
Done.
So this is just matching the overlay district to the underlying zoning.
Staff recommends approval. Any comments from the board? Any from the audience? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Barry made a motion, Nat seconded to close the public hearing on Article forty-seven. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And a positive recommendation.
Okay, Barry and Nat again, positive recommendation on Article forty-seven. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, David, I assume you're in favor?
I don't hear you over there.
No.
Article forty-eight is also Planning Board. Staff recommends approval. Andrew, you want to tackle this one?
Yep, so basically, when we adopted the Village Residential District, we cut the ground cover from, in most cases, it was R-20 before that. And it was cut from twelve and a half percent to ten percent. So over the years, there's been requests to change that back and to somehow restore it or allow for greater ground cover. Generally, this is a country overlay district, so we don't want to just add it back. It was reduced for a reason. The point here is, people have asked if it could be expanded back if there were limitations to the single story, which kept the buildings small. So in this case, there are some instances where people, you know, point to situations where they need at least an extra room or some sort of enclosed area on their ground floor. It would be a special permit issued by the Planning Board where you adhere the reasons for it and are able to put conditions on it, rather than it being just simply by right. So it's an idea that's here before you if it's something, you know, you're willing to support.
I think we sort of brought it up at that meeting in the, over at Two Fairgrounds at that time. We were talking about the articles. Does anybody have a problem with this? Okay. Anybody in the audience want to speak to this? Okay.
Motion to close the public hearing again?
It's the Barry and Nat show again.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Okay, the Barry and Nat show again.
Do I have to do the hand move?
Yes.
All right, so, positive recommendation.
Nat seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Ki-doki.
Continue.
Okay, Article forty-nine was continued. Article fifty is where we start the Citizens petition, and I believe you had to rewrite it and send it back in. Was this yours?
Yep.
And I believe you did correct it.
That's correct.
Because we had to renotice it also, didn't we?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
David Buckley with Cohen &amp; Cohen. So we represent one property owner in the proposed zoning change area at one thirty-eight. And the goal when we prepared this warrant was to get into hopefully CMI districts, so we could do an apartment building for employee housing. But after talking with staff and Leslie, it seems that's not the direction staff wants to go. I think they're leaning towards C-Tech, which would preclude an apartment building use for that property. So I don't know if, Leslie, you want to jump in with what your proposal was?
So we did an analysis of all the properties that are included in the article, and with the exception of one, they're much more consistent with the C-Tech district. And the C-Tech would also provide a transitional district between CMI to the west and CI to the south and to the east. We understand that, you know, C-Tech doesn't accomplish what the proponent of the article wants to do, and I don't think there's a district that really will. CMI doesn't seem to be appropriate for this area. I mean, it's close to the airport, it's close to industrial uses. I don't think this is a location where we should be encouraging additional residential development, and it's not what, at the staff level, we've talked about moving towards as we continue to phase out the RC-2 district. So if the board's inclined to move forward with a rezoning at all, then we recommend that you look at C-Tech for some or all of this land.
What's wrong with CN?
CMI.
Yeah, I know, but every, every one of those buildings on the front side of Nobody Farm Road is commercial. Every one of them.
Right. And they all have uses that are consistent with the C-Tech district.
Which one is the one that wanted to change?
For the apartment.
One thirty-eight, we wanted, at one thirty-eight, we wanted CMI.
Is that Hollands?
That's Dave Shampoo.
On the corner.
Yeah. Okay, because I know there's landscaping in there, there's certainly on Arrowhead, that was a commercial building that the ZBA did. And I know behind one of them, the big storage building in the back.
Doesn't do it fine.
Yeah, the big storage building in the back was approved by the ZBA of one of them, I think that big thing in the back of that one. Is, is C-Tech really the best one here?
Well, we don't, this, again, this is a citizen article. We don't have to move forward with any recommendation yet. We can certainly study this a little bit further. Unfortunately though, the CMI, extending CMI over to their property is just really not what we've ever thought about. If you look at the west, there is a transition to CN, so there's a possibility it could be partially CN and then partially C-Tech. And their particular lot is the smallest of the bunch. The others tend to be, to meet the requirements of C-Tech, which is a commercial district, as you know. And we certainly do need that type of allowance, and especially in this particular neighborhood. I don't, we're not really calling for a wholesale change of it. So C-Tech matches the existing characteristics, but again, we don't have to move forward with any article. At this time, we can take it up at the special if need be.
What's your opinion?
I think that's what we prefer to do. I know Leslie and Stephen had talked about pulling this one lot from the article, but seeing as we put it forth, you know, it seems a little unfair to impose the zoning change on all our neighbors and exclude us.
So you're okay waiting until the fall?
Yep.
We're okay with that?
Yeah, and I'm inclined to sort of address all the outstanding.
Yeah.
C-Tech that we can.
There's a massive amount of commercial in there that we want to get rid of the RC-2 and all that other stuff on there. And some guys on the other side of the street, I believe you met with them already, Andrew or Leslie, some of the guys going down Nobody or on the other side of the street want to come out and go to something that they can have more than two units. So they want to go to CN. So there's a lot of stuff going on on both sides where all the commercial is, like Varions and Berry's and those guys. They got to go someplace, because they came out of the multifamily. They never built the four that both of them were going to build. And then we took the multifamily away, so they, we lost their four units. So there's a lot of stuff going on in this whole area, all the way down to Teasdale. I think we already rezoned Teasdale.
Right, and I, as a reminder, I mean, there was, when we started the master plan process, there were over seventeen hundred acres of RC-2. There's now about a hundred and eighty-nine, so.
All right there.
We have quite a few here in this area that, you know, it's probably best to do it in a more comprehensive way. We have been chipping away where we can, but it's down kind of to the end here, so.
So it'd be a take no action?
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Any from the public?
Motion to close the public hearing then.
Second.
Okay, Barry and Nat again, close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And motion to take no action on this one.
Second.
All right, Nat seconded. Any further discussion on that one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, fifty-two, we already did. Fifty-three, this is a, okay, this may come out of our recommendation.
Madam Chair, after reviewing all of the issues around this particular property, we recommend that you vote to take no action on this particular request. There are numerous issues that need to be answered. There is a deed restriction that is certainly been in discussion, and it may make any attempt to divide this property moot. We have a, we've received a letter from the Land Bank as the major of butter, as well as most of the neighbors, and the request on extension of the sewer has also received a negative recommendation from the group, which includes myself, the Department of Public Health, and David Gray as the sewer commissioner.
Why negative when everybody else is in there?
Number one, there's no direct connection right now, so there would have to be a, an engineered connection to the nearest publicly available spot. Apparently, the, the extension of the sewer did not follow the guidelines that, or just preceded the adoption of the guidelines for the extension of sewers. There's still an open question about the access from the earlier subdivision that would, whether it's in effect or not, to Ms. and Ms. So there are some open issues that need to be resolved.
The sewer issues just came up, didn't they? Because we had no idea that they didn't follow when they put the sewer in, that it wasn't up, didn't follow the guidelines. That was a new one on me.
It's, I guess it is new. It's new information, but it's, it is accurate.
Okay, so it's take no action. Now, isn't the sewer, is the sewer a different article, Andrew? Or is it in this one? Is it all in this one?
It's all in the same article. There's three particular actions that are outlined.
It was somewhere. So it's take no action?
So overall, there would be, the recommendation is no action on the entire article.
Okay. Any further comments from the board?
No.
Any further comments from the public? We're taking no action on this. We're not putting it forward. You got to come down, you got to come down to the. This one's probably easier.
Excuse me, when you mentioned the public, I was getting up to come down, because I needed some clarification for my own education on what this means. Does this mean that for this town meeting, this is, like, instead of a negative recommendation, it's that this goes to town meeting, not that if the proponents come to you with new information, that you'll take it up before the town meeting? This is what's going to town meeting, right?
Yeah.
I just wanted to check and make, make sure that that's what we were saying. And then the reason I stayed here this long was to be observant, but also because this will come up then at town meeting.
This is a citizen article, so, and our recommendation is a recommendation to town meeting.
So it could go through as a package, or someone could call it.
If, if a proponent of this article asks the town meeting to vote on it and say, that's always an option to say, I would like town meeting to ignore the recommendation of the Planning Board in this case and vote positively on my article. They always have that option to do.
Okay.
It is a two-thirds majority for, it will be a two-thirds majority for both the zoning change and the sewer, since the sewer got a negative recommendation. So again, it's a high bar.
Okay.
After that.
Well, I just want to be.
Yep, sure.
Be ready. I was just going to ask them to withdraw the warrant and work with the town, the Planning Board.
We can't withdraw it once it's published, so it's got to stay there. But what happens is if it, if it has a take no action from us.
Okay.
Then if nobody calls it on town meeting, it goes away.
Yeah, yeah, I got that.
If they call it, it's up for debate, which is not what anybody anticipates.
No, but I just want to be prepared.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Campbell, did you want to identify yourself for Catherine? You got it?
Okay.
I am.
Don't talk until you get down there.
Okay, my name is Burton Balkhan, I'm in Butter, forty-seven C, and I was wondering, I noticed in the language, it talks about changing the zoning on a portion of the property. And I was just curious about, is that something that you guys change just a portion of a property? You change just a part of a forty, like forty-three, or would you, usually you change the whole property?
That was predicated in large part on a proposed subdivision, should all this go through.
Mm-hmm.
So the change in the zoning line was to leave Rick and LeAnn's house in the other.
The V-Tech, back keeping the V-Tech, okay.
Yeah, and just change the two to the same zone as the other side, other side of the street. So it did follow a subdivision that their surveyor had done.
Okay.
That's why it sort of said portion, because they didn't have it subdivided.
I haven't seen that language before too often.
We don't see it very often.
Okay, thank you very much.
We, there is an example earlier that we talked about, the property on Cherry and Bear Street.
Yeah.
That was, so generally, we, where we do a portion of is usually to encourage either, or I guess in line with, as the chairman said, either a subdivision or to move something away.
All right, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks.
Okay, any further discussion in the public? Seeing none.
Motion to close the public hearing, second.
Barry and Nat did their thing. Any further discussion on closing the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to take no action.
Second.
Okay, the same thing. Is there any further discussion on take no action on the entire article?
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.